Oh, and we're live, or close to live. I'm just going to bring the meeting to order for the interview portion of today's meeting. So if you're watching, we're going to start with Mr. Jack McCarthy, who's applying to join the HARB board. Mr. McCarthy, thank you so much for coming out today. I appreciate your spirit of volunteerism. And typically, the way this works is we just ask you a few questions, and then depending on the number of applicants, we would vote on those applicants at the end of the meeting. And so with that, I'll just ask if you could share a little bit what motivated you to apply for the position on the HARB board?
Number one, I'm semi-retired. I worked in commercial construction for 45 years, started out with a degree in civil engineering.
Uh-oh, we're getting a blinking light now.
Can you just speak a little more?
Yeah, you got to get a little closer to the mic.
How's that? Better?
Is that good? Yeah, good.
Should I start all over?
No, 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 you're fine.
Okay, so graduate of Temple University, started out as a young field engineer with a large general contractor into country, turned to a construction company. Forty-two offices throughout the country. We build very big projects. So I started out as a field engineer, worked my way all the way up to a project exec. I love the business, I love construction. My family, we invest in residential and commercial real estate. I'm also a Realtor. And I also own a company, Capstone Construction Group, and I've owned that since 2015. And that is a company where I just do local work here.
Awesome. Supervisor Blundy, did you have any questions?
No, I don't. I thank you for, you know, raising your hand. It's not unnoticed that without community volunteers like yourself, we can't get all the work done that we want to get done. So thank you very much.
It takes an army.
It does.
It certainly does. And throughout the years, I'm on various boards also. So, and you know, and I felt as if with my background, I'd be happy to jump into something like this because I've worked on historical projects in Philadelphia, and some really neat projects. So my experience, and not that I'm an expert, but what I bring to the table is really significant.
Well, you know, that's great. And you know, we have another historical project ongoing with as we wrestle how to move forward with Patterson Farms, so I'm sure your experience will be very helpful.
I've been watching throughout the years. We've lived, my wife and mine, lived here for 34 years now, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Matt? I don't have any questions for you. You sound like you have a very extensive background, so just want to thank you for volunteering.
You're quite welcome. Thank you for having me.
And go Temple Owls, huh?
Go Owls, yes. Actually, I'm a Temple Owls guy, but my younger son played college football at Gettysburg College.
Ah, okay.
So, and my wife and I were very, hi Dave, were very active in the parents' football club. So, and I was a football coach up until the boys were in eighth grade. And like anything else, you had to be a teacher to be on a field in high school sports. So, but my love is football, and I actually recruit for the last seven years now for Gettysburg College football.
We have another Lower Midfield resident who graduated Gettysburg in '20 who played football, Charles.
Charles.
Why can't I think of his last name?
Charles Hagan.
Thank you.
And I took him and Pop Warner Football as a gangly little kid, and I made him into a wide receiver, convinced him to go to Notre Dame High School, and then convinced him to go to Gettysburg.
Well, Linda.
He graduated in '20, my son Kevin graduated in '16, so. It's a very nice story. He still calls me coach, which is nice.
Thank you.
And you do, you did LMFA, or you're not doing it now, or?
No, no, actually, yeah, I am semi-retired, John, so kind of my goal is to be on somebody's staff next year, whether it be TCNJ or Princeton.
Oh.
I have some contacts, and you know, if I'm the guy that's breaking down the films or doing whatever, it's by my way. I love this sport. I love mentoring young gentlemen and teaching them. And I did that in my career, and did that in sports with football and baseball, so.
Wow.
It's all about giving back.
Yeah. I do think, well, I think coaching LMFA is one of the hardest. It really separates out, having to know where to place kids to be the best. And I've seen, I was fortunate, my son got really great coaching, but I've seen amazing coaching. And the reason I say that is because I'm not a great youth sports coach. I'm like, oh my gosh, you know, you can see where somebody puts the pieces together and they have a great understanding of that stuff. So that's wonderful. Well, thank you so much.
You're quite welcome. Thanks for having me.
Yeah. And if you, you're welcome to stay for the whole meeting, or you can go home and watch it on TV if you choose. It's up to you.
I think I'll watch it on TV.
Okay.
Oh, he's smart already.
Thanks for having me.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks. Moving on to our next interview, is Kathy Handville for the Human Relations Commission?
Hello again.
Kathy, welcome and thank you for coming out today.
Thanks.
I don't know that I have to ask you, what motivated you to apply for the Human Relations Commission, but?
Okay. I figured that since I was here three times trying to get you to pass it, it would probably be a good idea to apply for it. And I'm also, you know, of course, very interested in how the implementation goes, since it is a new commission.
And what, your work role outside of a member of the community, can you share a little bit about what you do for day job?
Yeah, I'm a psychotherapist, basically a trauma therapist, and with a specific specialization in working with trans people.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
Excellent. Matt?
I don't have any questions, but thank you very much for being involved in volunteering.
Supervisor Blundy?
Kathy, you know, what else is there to say? We're so sorry for California, but their loss has been our gain.
Right, thanks.
Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Supervisor McCartney?
I have nothing to add, but thank you so much for putting your name in the hat. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Well, for free.
All right, thank you.
And our, we're three minutes ahead of schedule. No, I know. Paul, would you like to come on? Paul is applying for the Human Relations Commission and is a frequent flyer on LMT boards.
I sat for seven years right in that chair. I was a member of the zoning hearing board for 13 years, served with James. And I think everybody should be involved in their local community government. I tell people all about it. It's great to be able to learn a lot more about it, you have a little bit more access to what's going on. I served on zoning for 13 years. You're not supposed to be on any one board forever, so I didn't ask to be reappointed at the time. I noticed this one, I'm not on Facebook or anything, but I actually saw it when it was in a legal notice in the Courier-Times. So that sounded interesting. And it's like, I, what's that, Lower Midfield website? It's, Lower Midfield is a great place to live. And reading over the ordinance, some of the things in there, it's like, wow, I'm not aware of a lot of these things which apparently happen that we need this commission for. And it's like, all right, I want to be part of that to, for the lack of a better word, route that out or figure out what's going on. And that's that.
Excellent, thank you so much for coming. I'm very familiar with your work on the zoning hearing board as someone who was your liaison for?
You were a couple times. You were the liaison.
A couple times, yeah, and I've sat in so many of them, so I'm very familiar. Supervisor McCartney, I'm giving you the first option.
Oh, thank you so much.
Now you can ask those tough questions you've been holding.
It's good seeing you again.
It's always nice to see you, James.
It's been a while. So our time together was probably about six years.
Yeah, I think so.
Seven years, yeah. So it was great serving with you on that board. I appreciate you putting your name in the hat for this one. I think you'd be a great addition to that board and hopefully, you know, help form the structure of it and get it going in the right direction. So I don't have any other questions besides that. Thanks. Want to go?
Yeah. I don't have any questions. You have an extensive volunteering background, so I just wanted to say thank you for, you know, applying.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just have a soliloquy. Thank you, obviously, Paul, thank you for returning. I'm always inspired by people who are willing to give a commitment, but to come back again, that's a great idea.
Well, I used to say this, sometimes, you know, when zoning got really contentious a lot of times, and people would try to tell us, you know, you don't know what you're doing and all this kind of stuff, other than inviting them to apply, because there was always a vacancy on zoning. So, you know, come on down, show us how it's done. But sometimes I would have jokingly say, well, you know, if we were that smart, would we volunteer to do this? So I'm sure you understand that sentiment.
Yes. And I think that this commission has a challenge. Let me finish before anyone gets excited, because normally we ask people, have you watched some of the meetings on Zoom or whatever? Have you gone to a meeting so you have an idea of what the role and responsibility will be? But here, other than the written text of what we're hoping to accomplish, you know, we don't have that guidance. So it gives me comfort that you've been a part of a committee before, that you've been, you're obviously reading the Courier, that's something, and are willing to help not only, you know, serve if chosen, but to help develop what's an important part of the community. So thank you.
Yeah.
Paul, thanks.
All right. Maybe I'll see you all again. Thanks a lot for having me.
Yeah. Good to see you.
Thank you.
I stay, but I have a whole lot of work to get done.
No worries. Yep.
Good night.
So we have about 10 minutes before the official start.
Do we want to, I guess, I'll turn off the mic, and we'll get started at 7:30?
On the lower makefield board supervisors, August 7th meeting to order. We're going to begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with a roll call. Supervisor McCartney, present. Supervisor Ross?
Here.
Supervisor Blundy?
Here.
Is Supervisor Grunier on the Zoom yet, or no?
No.
No, okay. Supervisor Grunier has a business meeting in Boston this evening and will not be able to join us with four of us present. We do have quorum. I'm going to begin with item number four. This is your community announcements. If you have specific announcements, you can call those in now if you'd like, or email them to the township at admin at lmt.org. To register for the pool, please visit lmt.org. By the way, last chance to get that August membership. And I don't know about you, but it's been very hot this summer, and I would urge you to take advantage of that. And if you have free time and would like to volunteer in the community, you can join the Friends of Five Mile Woods cleanup days. These are held the second Saturday of the month at Five Mile Woods, starting at 8:30 a.m. So it's before it gets too hot. Please come in comfortable shoes. You don't mind getting dirty and bring your own work gloves and water to stay hydrated. If you've got questions, you can email Monica Tierney at monicat at lmt.org. Item D, Lower Makefield Township is sponsoring a blood drive for the Red Cross here, Friday, August 16th, from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. in the meeting room. Now, I will tell you, as I looked on the website, there are still openings. So you can go to the American Red Cross website and you can set up a time, a specific time, such that you'll have an appointment to donate blood. And I'm told they're going to have the famous Amos cookies. So if you're like, hey, I haven't donated blood in a while, and I like famous Amos cookies, and free orange juice and water, well, you definitely want to take advantage of that. So go to redcrossblood.org and enter sponsor code LOWERMAKFIELD. With that, we'll move on to agenda item number five, public comment on non-agenda items. And the way this works is you're welcome to come up before the podium. Please tell us your name and whether you live in Lower Makefield Township or not. You're recognized for initial three minutes. If you need to have additional time, that's possible, but typically the reason why you're initially recognized is we don't want to interrupt you. So if you've got, you know, something you want to get out, that's what we're here for. With that, do we have any members of the public for public comment? Please come up to the dais. And again, please state your name and whether you are resident of Lower Makefield or not.
Lee Pedowitz, 247 Truman Way, Yardley. I'm a resident of Lower Makefield Township. Good evening, Chair Lewis, supervisors, Mr. Kratzner, Chief Kalusi, and all other Lower Makefield Township officials. Township ordinance 138-38K1, which was adopted by the Board of Supervisors, August 4th, 1997, reads 178-38 Streets General Requirements. This is section K. Private streets are prohibited except in multifamily development where the following requirements must be met. They will be approved only if designed to meet township construction standards and if there is safe and convenient access for emergency vehicles. From the 2000 International Fire Code dated December 1999, which the township adheres to, section 503 Fire Service Access Roads, 503.2, specifications. Fire apparatus access roads shall be installed and arranged in accordance with sections 503.2.1 through 503.2.7. 503.2.1 is dimensions. Fire apparatus access roads shall have an unobstructed width of not less than 20 feet, except for approved security gates in accordance with section 503.6, and an unobstructed vertical clearance of not less than 13 feet 6 inches. And then referring to section 503.6, security gates. Where security gates are installed, they shall be maintained and an improved means of emergency operations shall be provided and maintained. I have been told and notified in writing that the Regency at Yardley Community was designed and built, meeting all relevant township ordinances and standards. On July 29th, 2021, the fire department brought an aerial piece of apparatus to the Regency at Yardley's Renaissance Boulevard entrance off Oxford Valley Road. On July 30th, 2021, Deputy Chief and LMT Fire Marshal Timothy Chamberlain reported that when the aerial attempted to enter via the Renaissance Boulevard entrance, we were unable to make the entrance without going over the Belgian block curb, which could possibly destroy our tires, or hitting the gate box on the island located in the middle of the entrance exit. Chair Lewis, how does the inability of a piece of fire apparatus to enter the Regency at Yardley Community comply with the above ordinance and standards?
So if you're asking a question I was not aware of, I'm relying on Fire Services Director Tim Chamberlain's memo on this. And onsite, they arrived on September 8th, 2022 at 11:00 a.m. Tim Chamberlain, Fire Chief Glenn Chamberlain, Chief Engineer Adam Keister, took the Yardley Makefield Fire Company's 2015 Pierce aerial pumper out to the north entrance of the Regency Development on Oxford Valley Road to ensure that emergency vehicles can access the development. That's the one that you're speaking of. On site were HOA President Mark Peroli, Resident Lee Pedowitz, and another resident to watch the apparatus come in. Our 2015 Pierce aerial pumper is 43 feet long and weighs approximately 73,000 pounds, which is the largest emergency vehicle that will respond into the development during an emergency. Upon arrival, Chief Engineer Keister came in the entrance and swung the apparatus to the left to come through the gate access. The apparatus fit between the gates and the curb without hitting and continued into the development. The apparatus turned around and proceeded out the same entrance, in which the fire company policy is to proceed out in the inside of the gates before it's more of a straight shot. The apparatus exited with no problems. I advise Mr. Peroli and Mr. Pedowitz that there is no issue with any emergency vehicle accessing this entrance when needed. It's imperative that when there is inclement weather, such as snow, that no piles are left next to the gates, which would diminish the width, making it difficult to access. So Fire Services Director, in answer to your question, performed a test. And my understanding is that vehicle is actually larger than our current largest vehicle, which is by a couple feet. We're, the current largest apparatus is like 41 feet, I believe. So that's their official test and review of the safety of that gate with our largest, then largest, and larger than our current largest apparatus. So we were able to confirm that it was a safe entry.
With all due respect, Chair Lewis, what was the date of that letter you're looking at?
The, well, first, the letter that was sent to you was dated July 31st, but it references the September 8th, 2022 inspection, or safety test.
The point I'm trying to make is that when they tried to bring the piece of apparatus in in 2021, it could not safely enter. And my question is, you know, I've been told that the Regency at Yardley Development was developed and approved in accordance with township ordinance and standard, as I said in my remarks. How could that be the case if a fire truck came in in the year 2021, or the development was built in 2011, 2010, whenever, couldn't get in from the get-go? It was only until I brought it up. So my question is, how could that have been allowed to occur? And if then you take a look at the IFC standard, the 2000 IFC standard, it clearly states that the minimum width of a fire access road should be 20 feet, unobstructed. So I would just like to know if somebody could convince me that these entrances to the Regency at Yardley Development meet these standards and ordinances, then I'll be satisfied.
But I believe that was the finding of the letter that was sent to you on July 31st.
My question is, why was the development built when a fire truck could not come in deliberately?
Pardon me, Mr. Pedowitz. We did a test in 2022 with our largest apparatus. It was able to enter and exit.
No, I'm sorry. With all due respect, in 2021, they brought over an aerial piece of apparatus, as said in the letter. It could not make entry. It could not enter. So what Toll Brothers did was there were two islands there, and Toll Brothers removed one of the islands. And in 2022, when the chief brought over the aerial piece of apparatus, it could squeeze in. I would not say it's convenient, but, you know, okay, that takes care of the township ordinance. But how is the IFC ordinance being addressed when it says the minimum width should be 20 feet, unobstructed?
So that was addressed in the letter and within details that you received in July 31st. What I could say, and as it relates to July, the 2021, I do recall adjustments being made to those islands. But in terms of Regency in general, you have to understand that the process under which that particular parcel was approved was through court order. And this predates, I think, everyone on this dais, with the exception of Chief, who was here during that time. But the court mandated the final approval of how that development was to be done. It stipulated specific instructions as to what the designs were and in terms of funds that were, for example, that were to be dealt with as it relates to other infrastructure improvements in the area. That was a circumstance that was part of a court order. That was not approved by the board in a traditional manner. That was part of a court order.
So you're saying that the court basically mandated that standards and ordinances be violated? Is that what you're saying?
No, I did not say that. I'm saying that the approval process for Regency did not follow a standard SADO process. It followed a process based on a court order because there were litigants involved in the matter. There were a number of community folks that litigated against the property owner to stop them from what their original intent was to develop in that area. They were successful, and there was a settlement between the property owner and the litigants. The litigants are separate from the township. And there's a binding agreement from that case that we have to occasionally go back and follow up with. So to your point is, if you're asking if, again, the board that was constituted at the time that that case occurred and this particular parcel was approved for development, if you're arguing that they somehow violated the law, I would suggest that it was court reviewed as part of that settlement. And everyone on the board was, none of us were here at that time. So if your concern is that you thought at the time of approval that the then-board had approved how Regency was to be developed and did it in such a way that made it unsafe, I would suggest that I can't answer that for you, but I can say that we did in fact test the safety of that entrance. Fire Services Director Tim Chamberlain is here. He can go into the nuances of this. He will be having a fire safety report update later in our meeting, but I guess what I'm trying to communicate to you is that we actually took your concerns very seriously in that we tested this in 2022. Our solicitor reviewed your findings, your proposed findings, and responded to you directly on that. So I'm having, I'm hard pressed, if you're asking me a question, I don't want to, I don't know enough to impugn the integrity or the decision-making process of the board. From 2006, right? Anybody? 2006. Yeah, I mean, a very different board, very different laws. I don't know. And by the same measure, there, you know, a lot of things change over time.
I understand that. But as an engineer, when I design something, or I look for compliance, basically it's the standard in effect at that time, the time of construction. Now, the Regency, the plan that I looked at was dated 2006. I think it went through five revisions. So it was finally approved in 2011. It's got a list of waivers, and the waivers list waivers from the township ordinances. It says nothing about waivers for the international, the IFC 2000, or the 2000 IFC, however you want to call it. No waivers about that. So I understand you can argue convenient access, but you can't argue with me when the township is supposed to adhere to IFC 2000 when it says the minimum width of a fire access road is 20 feet.
Right, but pardon me, Mr. Pedowitz, before we continue on that path. And again, I think this is really a question for, and I don't know if this was covered in the letter, as to when the IFC 2000 rules.
They were in a, oh, I'm sorry.
Solicitor Carl, the IFC International Fire Code 2000, probably, if it would be okay, would you be, allow Fire Services Director Chamberlain to address?
Sure.
Okay, if you want to come on.
Should I move over?
No, no, just make sure the mic is on. So.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we're good. Fire Services Director Chamberlain, if you could address some of the concerns about the structure of the International Fire Code rules and.
No, that's fine. So the township was under the 2000 Fire Code from 2003 till approximately 2022, when we adopted the 2018 Fire Code. So along those ways, there were many changes in that. Referring to the apparatus access roads, when it says 20 feet, that is a two-lane road in and out. So that's 10 foot on either side. There's not an expectation to have a 40-foot wide road, per se. If you refer to, as you start looking at the codes as they were reviewed over the years, if this development was put in today, that gate would meet the IFC 2018 for gates. It's 12 foot wide on either side, and that's what the code states today as well. Back in 2000, they didn't stipulate that. All they said was 20-foot wide apparatus access roads. If there's gates, it has to be approved by the AHJ, which apparently, as you know, it was. So there was no impeding thing. When Mr. Pedowitz refers to my 2021 letter, when it says that the truck went over the Belgian block, that was prior to them removing that island. They removed that island. We went back in 2022. We were able to swing it better and came right in. The other day, we had our biggest truck out, which is a 41-foot-long aerial truck. And we took video of us going in that entrance with no problem at all. So we have that here. We can play that, or it's on file. So there is no restrictions for our apparatus. This is the largest piece of apparatus that will be going into that development. So.
And it appears the video is being shown now?
A little bit of a slow approach there. You know, I think, if I may supervise, Chair?
Hold on a second. So that shows you entering and exiting.
And just to put a point to that, that was during a qualification for a brand-new driver on that truck. So it wasn't like an experienced apparatus driver. And our protocol when we come into developments is to not go full-blown force. So when you're looking at the slow speed, that is acceptable to get in there. So.
One last question for your Fire Services Director Chamberlain, and that is, there are three entrances into Regency, and that is higher than is required under the IFC and SADO. Am I correct on that?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Just a quick question. That entrance there, that's the one Oxford Valley Road going towards Route 1, the first one?
So that is the north entrance when they consider it. So you're coming across a river of tracks going towards, I would say, Route 1, yes. That's the first one you hit after the senior living center.
And that's the most, that's the most narrow of the ones?
Correct. That's the one that has the no signs for trucks to turn in there and stuff like that, yes.
Understood, thank you.
Just a final word. The point that's being missed is, when this community was approved and developed, there should not have been gates. There shouldn't have, there shouldn't have been gates there. There shouldn't have been islands there. And if it was installed, approved and designed as per ordinance and standard, and I understand what the courts say, but I can't believe that a court would say, well, we're going to violate ordinances and standards. We wouldn't be having this discussion because they're not there. I am concerned for the safety and welfare of my community. And regardless, there could be 100 entrances to the Regency at Yardley, but my house happens to be right near that north entrance. And if I'm standing there, and God forbid, there's a serious accident, and I have to see a fire truck go past that entrance and come in another entrance, and you all know that the streets in Regency at Yardley are not designed very well for accommodating large fire equipment, I'll be damned if I'm. for accommodating large fire equipment, I'll be damned if I'm going to stand there and watch a fire truck go past and have to wiggle its way back in to get to my house. And I think you would all understand that if you were in the same situation. So my question again is, how could this have been approved back in 2006 when a fire truck could not have made entrance at the Renaissance Boulevard entrance off Oxford Valley Road? And if these ordinances and codes were adhered to, we wouldn't be having this discussion today. There would be no gates. And with all due respect to the Chief, okay, you don't come blowing in there, but if there were no gates there, a fire truck could come in a little bit quicker. And don't forget, the gate was up. So that's all I have to say. And I thank you for your attention.
Thanks. Is there any other public comment? We have one more person? And again, just please state your name, whether you live in Lower Makefield Township.
My name is Mark Peroli. I live in Lower Makefield Township, 221 Grant Way, and I happen to be the Board President of Regency at Yardley. I think what's really important for us is the fact that, first of all, I actually have to thank Lee because of his tenacity, that island was removed after July 29th, 2021. He was proactive about that and he made it happen. And in fact, he also had a lot to do with making sure that the ADA requirements are being met, and we're in the process of doing that as well. But from our standpoint, the board and the communities, we feel very comfortable that, between Mr. Chamberlain and the Board of Supervisors, that we have a community that can be entered quickly and safely, whether you live at that end of the community or another, and actually would thank the Board of Supervisors, the township, for making sure that we are safe. So I appreciate your help on that. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comment? I'm not seeing any. Moving on to item six, the consent agenda item. And these are a series of items that we'll review with one motion. If any supervisor has a concern, any member has a concern with any of the items on this list or has questions and want them removed out, please feel free to share that. I'm not seeing. I'll give you 30 seconds if you need more time with that. Supervisor Ross, if you'd like to make the motion or so move?
Second.
Okay. All who's in favor of the consent agenda item signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let the record reflect that the vote was four zero. We're going to move on to Agenda Item 7A, Consider Approval of a Long-Term Tree Planting Plan?
Good evening. My name is Jim Majewski. I'm the Community Development Director. I'm here with Jim Bray and Alan Dresser from Environmental Advisory Council. As you are probably all aware, the township has embarked on preparing a long-range tree planting plan as sort of a follow-up to our 2016 long-range plan where we planted trees in a number of different parks throughout the community. As part of this, we engaged Thomas Comida Associates to help us in the preparation of this plan. We went and visited a number of parks, open spaces, and detention basin areas throughout the township that we thought might be suitable to have plantings placed in those. We also, after Tom had reviewed that with us, he had prepared some drafts, submitted that to the EAC, the Park and Rec Board. They reviewed it, made comments, and ultimately, we got to a point where now we're here in front of the board with our plan that you had within your packet. As part of this long-range plan, the plan is to plant approximately 1,545 trees, 1,319 shrubs, and 1,500 perennials for plantings throughout our facilities. Included in this, we do have some trees that we have in reserve without the exact locations noted. As a lot of the detention basins, we're still embarking on the process of doing our pollution reduction plan, where we've set aside a certain number of trees, shrubs, and perennials for use in the development of that pollution reduction plan and other basin naturalization projects. So as part of that, we'd like to have your authorization to approve or adopt the 2024 Long-Range Tree Planting Plan as submitted so that we could move forward and plant trees with the monies that have been gathering in our tree fund. And that tree fund has been funded by developers as they remove trees on sites. If they're unable to plant trees back on their sites, they've contributed money sort of as an offset for that. And that's the source of funding for our tree fund that would fund the future plantings as we go forward.
Is there motions for discussion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
We would like to make a couple of comments as well.
Sure.
Well, the board goes first, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Sorry, Jim.
Supervisor Blundy, did you want to go? Did you have a question?
I mean, I do have some questions because, you know, I'm just not sure how our ordinance reads and what we can do. So I'm not sure how to move forward on that, but I'll put that to the side for a second. I'm all for trees. In fact, Matt and I were talking about, you know, what we could do to use the Tree Bank money to ensure that we are a, you know, eco-friendly community and all, without mumbling and bumbling along pollinators and butterflies what the difference is. But where's the volunteer part of this, right? I was so excited by working, and you don't have to respond yet, Jim, because everybody up here has to talk before that, but so excited by the work that the EAC led in 2019 and 2020. And every time I drive by those trees, and I'm sure many families, when they drive by those trees and remember that they were part of planting those trees, you know, that's another way that we help build community. So I don't think it has to be on the shoulders of the residents to plant all the trees, but I also don't want to just have commercial planters planting all the trees. I want to find some kind of balance. So those would be my overall comments.
I have a question as well. So Dave, and I don't know if you know the answer to this, so, or Jim, we have this Tree Bank fund, all this money that, you know, fee in lieu of that we got from developers. And I understand that we use it to plant trees, which is great. Is there also a maintenance program that, or some kind of maintenance budget that's part of that? Is that, can that be used for maintenance of plantings? Because it's great to plant trees, but at some point, you're going to have to maintain trees. So are we able to use that fund to maintain all the tree plantings that we're doing, or is that specifically only to plant trees?
So in terms of the ordinance language, and I was trying to pull that up right now, the ordinance language seems to be restrictive to the planting of trees. Again, historically, I believe the township has funded tree maintenance through other sort of general operating funds. Is that accurate?
That'd be correct.
I mean, is there a possibility, because we're talking, how much is in the Tree Bank right now, total? Yeah, I mean, planting $344,000 worth of trees sounds amazing, but maintaining $344,000 worth of trees sounds like a nightmare. So I mean, is there a way to update the ordinance in order for us to be able to leverage some of that to be maintenance as well? I mean, again, I'm just spitballing here to see whether or not that's something we can do.
Yeah, I mean, you can, it's your subdivision land development ordinance, so I'm sure you could, you can make modifications to address the issue that you're raising, as well as the issue that Supervisor Blundy is raising, if there's a desire to create additional flexibility as it relates to those funds. But I'll defer to the solicitor on that.
We could absolutely incorporate that language into an amendment to the current ordinance. But just to be clear, are you suggesting that if trees are planted on private property, to be able to maintain those as well?
No, I mean, it would only be where we're planting, which would be on our owned property.
Okay. But my understanding is that some of these trees that are going to be planted are going to be offered to?
Well, so what Matt, sorry, Matt. But what Matt and I have been spitballing around is, you know, with, with the amount of money that there is in the Tree Bank, would there be the ability to offer to residents to, so that the trees weren't only on park and public property, that we might incentivize residents to plant more trees on their property? And then again, back to my mumbling, bumbling butterflies and pollinators. I think, not licensed in this state, but I have a concern that the language in the current version is more restrictive than we might think. So definitely, we would need an amendment to do what you're talking about, and we might need an amendment to do shrubs and perennials as well.
Yeah, again, just forward-thinking here, because these trees are little saplings now, but at some point, they're not going to be. And we don't want to strap future boards with now huge, you know, general fund costs to maintain, you know, a couple thousand trees that we're going to be planting.
Yeah, I would like, Dad, I would agree with that. Currently, we're spending, I couldn't give you an exact, but several thousand dollars a month on tree maintenance in the township.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's the investment that's made in trees and maintenance of trees is significant, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I guess back to Suzanne's original comment about volunteer planting, that is part of the idea of this, that it would be a combination of some volunteer plantings. Sometimes it's difficult to get those organized, depending on the time of year, but I know that.
Thank you, Monica.
That is something that's been, that's been something that's been very successful. I know the people who are involved in it, you know, they take pride in the fact that they've given back to their community. And seeing a tree that you helped plant in the ground is kind of satisfying as a resident.
Jim, any, just as a follow-up, just another item that I believe James might have raised before, but the concept of, you know, essentially a tree nursery, was there, there was some evaluation of a potential location for that? Is that, is that correct as part of this?
Yes, we went around to the various sites with Tom Comida. We looked at areas, and one area that looked very promising was in Memorial Park. There's an area they call the chimney, sort of the area behind where the 1-kilometer walking trail is. And it's pretty much wide open. It's not utilized that much by anyone. So that we thought that would be a good area to grow some nursery plants. So we reserved off, I think, maybe an acre of land or so, which has enough room to plant like 250 nursery trees in there.
If I may comment to, firstly, thank you, James. The nursery tree idea was your idea. And community involvement is an integral part of this plan. The last plan that started in 2016 used a lot of community volunteers over that seven-year period. And I think it's really, really important. Our residents have to buy into this plan, too. What we are foreseeing in the current plan is, in this fall, a rather large planting at the golf course. And then in the spring of 2025, we are looking at community involvement. Now firstly, the community involvement lends itself to the small trees that will be planted in the nursery. Also, this plan calls for a great deal of shrubbery and perennials that also lend themselves to community involvement. Again, this was very successful under the previous plan, and we think it'll be just as successful under this plan. And I know this is one of Monica Tierney's pet projects as well. And the EAC thinks this is an excellent idea.
One other thing I know, someone had mentioned about offering trees to residents. That is something that I know, I think, Upper Makefield, they have a Tree Bank fund, and I believe they have a program to do that. So that's something we could definitely look into. How does that function? And how does that operate to see if it's something that might work for Lower Makefield, too?
Yeah, if I might comment on that as well, the Upper Makefield, and I think there's one other township, what they do is they offer an incentive to residents. I think they charge residents something like $25 for a tree that's worth considerably more than that. And I think it's worked fairly well in Upper Makefield. And I certainly think that something like that could work well in our township as well.
Excellent. One question I had in the Memorial Park plantings, there were a number of sourwoods that were going to be placed around the basketball courts, not necessarily the volleyball courts. How tall will those trees be when planted? And what's their projected growth rate?
Well, I'd have to know what the species are. Do you?
Sour, yeah.
Yeah, sourwood firstly is an incredible tree. The fall color is actually, some people think, better than maples.
Yep, you need to come closer to the mic if you could.
They are fairly slow-growing. They're not a super-fast-growing tree, but they're quite beautiful. The leaf configuration is lovely, and the fall color is quite vibrant.
How much, how tall will they be when they're planted? Are they going to be five? Eight to 10?
Yeah, planted, maybe around eight to 10 feet or so. And maybe after 60, 70 years, they might get to be maybe 50 feet.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, they're not considered a large tree. They're considered a medium-sized, a small tree.
You know, for whatever my Google skills are worth, they grow up to two feet per year until they reach maturity. And then they're 25 to 30 feet with a crown spread of 20 feet. But in their native habitat, which I assume is us, they can grow up to 60 feet tall with a crown spread of about 100.
Couple things on that one. Is that making sure that they're a safe distance from the actual court area because we are in the process of restoring that court? But the height of eight to 10 for the initial planting is actually ideal for giving people reference around those courts, which is, which if you've ever been there, they're kind of like out there with nothing around them. So that would be helpful. But I just worry that, you know, in 20 years, we might have an issue where the root structure has gotten under the court. So, you know, my concern is, and that's, and the problem is, on the map, it's very hard to tell how close it is actually to the paved areas of Memorial Park, but because, you know, the dots are so large and the trees are not at this point. But this at least gives you a visual element of that. That's, did any other supervisor have any other questions? Mr. Bray, any other last comments before we call the question?
Yeah, a couple. Firstly, I think the, let's just go back for history a little because it's kind of interesting what happened. In 2015, Alan and I were at a Board of Supervisors meeting, and I don't know what exactly the topic was, but somehow trees were talked about. And I mentioned to Alan that, you know, in Lower Makefield Township, we need a long-range tree plan. And Alan said to me, we're here right now. Why don't you say something? I said something, and the board was incredibly responsive. Two months later, they started the preparation of the 2016 Long-Range Tree Plan. And now, of course, that's finished. We planted over 1,000 trees, 300 or 400 shrubs. And now we're looking at the 2024 plan. And this is something that we think should literally perpetuate in Lower Makefield Township. Building, rather, planting trees, I think, is one of the best things that a community can do for its residents. Not only the shade, but stormwater management, erosion control, their carbon sequestration, they give off oxygen. And my last point, which I think is one of the most important to me, they are incredibly beautiful.
Thank you. I do want to make note, and, you know, folks who, we had a couple of folks come up and interviewed a volunteer as part of boards and commissions in Lower Makefield. And to think that you gentlemen have been part of the EAC for a very long time. And what I would say is, what an amazing impact our EAC has had on our community in, across many, many years, across many, many people, that has created the circumstance where, you know, we've been able to build great things in our community. So I deeply appreciate your service to the community. So I deeply appreciate your service to the community. I've known you guys for, oh, gosh, personally, 10-plus years? Long time, yeah. So I just wanted to thank you for that and the detailed work that you do. I know that, you know, of our boards and commissions, we have some really just dedicated folks, whether it's Historical Commission, the things that they've done, that you guys have done, or the level of detail like the zoning hearing board, the planning commission. So I just wanted to say thank you for that, and I very much appreciate that on a personal level as a resident, in addition to being one of your supervisors. So I wanted to say thank you.
Yeah, as mentioned, we have 344,000 in the tree bank account, and that's going to allow us to proceed with a fairly aggressive planning schedule in the next few years. And to that end, I want to thank the board for its strong support of the tree replacement ordinance because developers generally ask for waivers. And eight to 10 years ago, they were normally granted the waiver. But lately, you guys have held tough, and you've denied the waivers to the benefit of the community. And I'd just like to thank you for that.
And I would also like to thank you, John, and the board for the kind words. Thank you.
With that, I'll call the question.
Can I... I mean...
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just concerned if, in fact... And I could be misreading it, misunderstanding it, but if, in fact, we... The ordinance does not allow for the planting of shrubs and perennials as written. And I think we would all agree, we would be open to amending that lickety-splickety. Can we pass something that we, you know, is in violation of our ordinance?
Yeah, I mean, you're adopting a plan. It's not establishing the funding mechanism for that plan. So I think you have the ability to adopt a plan with a combination of funding sources. So that could be, you know, the township pursuing, for example, a tree vitalized grant as from an external source to help plant some of the trees that are specified within your planting plan. So I don't think an action of adopting a plan that has things that may not be fundable under the existing provisions of your tree bank or your subdivision land development is an issue because there are sources to fund these efforts beyond just tree bank funding.
Thank you. Thank you.
With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving our long-term tree planting plan as described signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Let the record reflect it, the board's vote was four-zero. Agenda item 7B, consider authorizing the solicitation of bids for the Fall 2024 Tree Planting Program. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. With that, we do have a member of public comment. Sure, you're welcome to come up.
Hi, I'm Lori Gray. I am a member of Lower Makefield Township. And it's actually back to the tree, long-term tree planting plan, which I think is great. And I'm really excited about it. But where are the actual plans of where the trees are going to get planted? Did I... Is that on the website, and I missed it somewhere? Or... Because I... My main concern, or go ahead.
It has not been posted at this point. I mean, it would be posted post-action by the Board of Supervisors. I mean, at this point, it was just simply a draft document, so.
Okay. The main reason why I'm asking that is because I know I've talked about Macklesfield Park before. And I know, Jim, you and I have talked about where in this plan is Macklesfield Park additional planting of the trees. We need it for sound barrier, for light barrier. So I was just questioning, where in this plan is the additional trees for the area in Macklesfield Park?
Yeah, I'll share my screen right now. It should be propping up shortly. And basically, for Macklesfield Park, since we're undergoing the master plan process to potentially move things around within the park, we looked at where we could put trees now that would have a beneficial impact for the neighborhood for the reasons that you had cited, light pollution, noise pollution. So we chose areas along the periphery of the park that we know won't be touched by any version of the master plan for any changes to Macklesfield Park. And that includes a combination of evergreens and deciduous trees along the edges of your development. And the cemetery, I think there's like a few trees were taken down a few years ago.
Right.
So we want to fill those gaps back in. So I think there we have about 20 trees slated to be planted.
Great, and these gentlemen know trees better than me.
Yes, I also might want to add a comment. That was one of the main reasons we came up with the concept of reserve trees. When we did the 2016 plan, sometimes when we entered a specific area, we found out that something wasn't exactly right according to the plan, and we had to deviate. So this gives us the flexibility to do that. We have over 200 general reserve trees. Our plan is as soon as the master plan for Macklesfield is finished, then we're going to go in there with other significant tree plantings.
Okay, but you're going to do these 20 this year? Is that when you're doing these 20 or however many? I don't know how many, we're on that little...
That will depend upon the township, you know.
Yeah, I think we were looking at possibly that area and the golf course.
Okay, for the first go-around, when you were talking about fall of 2024? And then the next round is spring of '25, correct?
Two months from now.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and the information. Thank you for all your great, hard work. We appreciate it. Thank you.
I believe there's a motion on the floor for authorizing the solicitation of bids for the Fall 2024 Tree Planting Program. Not seeing any additional comments. We'll call the question. All those in favor?
Sorry, John.
Oh, sure.
Can we just confirm that the golf course has seen these, and that they're good with the...
The golf... I mean, you can speak to that. But the golf course has reviewed this, but go.
Yeah, yes, we had walked the course with Micah Tarr and members of his staff to look at where trees might be most beneficial. And prior to do anything, we'll just reconfirm the exact locations of things to make sure that it works out for the best.
Excellent, thank you.
It's adding strokes to my game. Trees are like a magnet for my golf ball.
Well, there are a few areas that Micah Tarr pointed out that trees would be beneficial to prevent the balls from going into the next fairway, so.
I love that other fairway, though.
As long as you stay in the right one, it's fine.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, right?
Before we actually have the vote, I'd let the record reflect that Supervisor McCartney is a far better golfer than I am. And I believe I lost many more balls than you. With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
He didn't know whether to agree with that or what.
I was trying to think of the nickname somebody made.
He was going to say, "You're absolutely correct." At the same time, he didn't know whether...
Yeah, he wasn't sure.
Also, during the planning, if Supervisor McCartney wants to put in a few ideas of his own where he's having trouble, I think the head of the golf course would probably accommodate him.
I'd love to be a part of that.
Okay, with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor of authorizing the solicitation of bids for the Fall 2024 Tree Planting signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any knows or stains... Let the record reflect it, it's four-zero. Moving on to agenda item eight, general project updates for the engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, fellow supervisors. We have our general project engineering report provided with the meeting packet this evening. I just wanted to highlight, as we do, a few projects that are ongoing for your information this evening. The first, just as a kind of status update, the Township's MS4 program, the annual report that we prepare each year to show our progress in meeting the DEP's requirements. That's being prepared, has a September deadline each year, so that's in progress. And will be going in here in the next couple of weeks. I'll highlight the Highland Drive Drainage Project. Some exciting news on the permit side in the last few weeks. I think last meeting, we mentioned the Bucks County Conservation District had sent their letter of adequacy, which is their approval. That was at the end of June. The PADEP general permits, which there were five of those permits in total, were all approved as of July 25th. There is an update to the GP3, which involves the stream banks. And that is just from coordination, some continued coordination we had with the resident at One Highland Drive because the stream kind of goes through a good portion of his private property there. So we did confirm with the DEP in conversations with them. It wouldn't be a resubmission, it's just an update to that stream bank side. And that's currently ongoing, and we're hopeful that would be kind of approved once again in the next, hopefully, two weeks or so here is usually their timeline for return. We are planning to provide for the drainage projects' overall schedule. An update to that, once we have these permits officially approved. So just waiting for that last one. And that is, you know, mentioned a few times in that project schedule. So with those approved permits, we'll be able to really have a nice update to that. And we'll hopefully be able to share that either next meeting or the following one with some updates. For this year's road program, which is ongoing, the contractor is moving through those areas. So far, with no issue, moving quite well. They did the milling and paving in the Penn Valley Manor neighborhood. They've completed the inlet top replacements. And they are scheduled to begin the ADA ramp work originally this week. With the weather and some other factors, they're looking to start that on Monday, on the 12th. So that would be done. The Quarry Commons neighborhood, once the ramps are completed, they'll come through and do the milling and paving of the roadways. So the schedule's still on track. It'll be getting a little tight towards the end, but the contractor confirmed they're on track to have everything complete before the school year comes about. And we have, you know, folks going out in their school buses on the roads. An update for the Woodside Road Bike Path Project. The progress with the utility companies is still moving along quite well. The three utility companies that are moving their lines, first one is complete, that was Crown Castle. Comcast was looking to complete this week. They're delayed a little bit with the weather, the second half of this week. So they're looking to wrap up as we go into next week. Following them would be the last, which is Verizon, as we mentioned. They would move their equipment, that's the lowest on the poles there. And then with that, with those old poles being their property, they would remove those. And they would be finally out of the way there. We've confirmed with the contractor, they provided some pricing, which just the other... I think yesterday they provided it, so we're reviewing that. Their schedule would still be to remobilize if all is good to move forward in about one to two weeks after Verizon is complete with their work. Just some other general updates. The Taylorsville Road Improvements Project, which is the stormwater improvements, the sidewalk and curb and pedestrian connectivity project. Happy to announce that grant application was submitted on July 31st, as was its deadline, to DCED. We thanked the board and also staff for really some good input. I think that application, we feel, really is very robust and has a great shot for the funding that we requested. In the meantime, while that is submitted with DCED, we're moving forward with the preliminary design plan set. Next milestone with that would have that to a point where we review internally with staff and then set up a meeting with PennDOT before we would look to, you know, go into permitting phase with them. And lastly, an update for capital work. The Memorial Park basketball courts, you had mentioned, they're being redone. That is in progress. They started that yesterday with the milling of the courts. They were planning to continue with moving to the paving part of that, but the weather's delayed that by a couple of days. So they are looking to get back out there and complete that once the weather clears. And we'll be out there, you know, helping to have eyes on that to make sure it's done for the plans that were provided. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
No? Okay, with that, moving on to agenda item nine, fire safety. And Tim, welcome back.
Jim, can I see one?
Make sure I left the mic on for you, too.
Is it on? Yes. All right, I'd just like to give a quick update of the fire service, what happened over the past month and stuff like that. I know you guys got your packets, but just to hit on some of the key points. Forty-seven calls for service the fire company ran in July, bringing up total up to 370 for the year. Forty-one of them were actually in Lower Makefield, and the rest broken down through Yardley Borough Municipalities and stuff like that. July's a tough month for the fire company for training, because people are on vacation. But they did consist of forcible entry training, ground ladders, right over here at the township building one night, and pump operations. Flow and water stayed cool. Speaking of flow and water, they went over and wet down the LMP camp kids. They love that. So thanks to the volunteers that did that. They also staffed a truck at the fireworks at Shady Brook, so that was fun. Big thing this past month was they were able to secure grants for a high-water vehicle. It's being constructed now down in Feasterville at the plant, and it should be in in December. So we will have that versatility of a high-water vehicle. So any, you know, water rescue, stuff like that, we can safely get the people out rather than throw them in our boats and stuff like that. So that was good. We actually have three members that were able to join the fire company over the past year and are starting fire school next month. Actually, I'm sorry, this month, it's August, flying by. So that's good, that's exciting for them. And then numerous tours were given by the volunteers at the firehouse for the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts and homeschools over the past month. Out of the director's office, out of those 47 calls for service, eight of them required a fire marshal, either investigation or code compliance or code enforcement. Our smoke detector program, which we partnered American Red Cross through the Township and Fire Company, we installed 18 smoke detectors in residences that either had non-working smoke detectors or older than 25 to 30 years old. So that was good. Plan review, we kept going. Special events permits. We did about six and seven special events permits inspections this past month. The fire inspectors and myself completed 60 fire safety inspections, which included two apartment complexes. And this past year, the fire inspection program revamped their apartment complex inspections. So instead of just doing the clubhouses, we're actually going into each apartment building common areas and making sure that all their egresses open, emergency lights and stuff like that. So it's taking a little more time, but we're ensuring everything is safe for all those residents. The Knox Box Program, which we work with, with the police department, has worked very well. We updated a lot of them over this past month, 33 of them. And the fire safety registrations, which is required by ordinance, went out in June, the letters, explaining the ordinance, explaining the requirements. And we've been getting them back day by day. So far, the total is 31,900 we received back in the registrations. So we're doing pretty good with that, and they're still filtering in day by day. So just a quick update of the fire service. We are staying busy. Usually July gets slow, but I don't like to say slow in the emergency services field because then something happens, so. So any questions for me?
Just a couple of quick comments. And one of the things that you had mentioned was smoke alarms. Generally, those are only good for about 10 years. Is that the...
Correct, yes. That's what code says. Anything over 10 years, they should be replaced because there's a good chance of them, even though they beep, they might not smell anymore, so.
Right, so it's always a good time for a public service announcement. If you've been in your house a long time, swap out the... And look at the upside of this. If you do it proactively, they won't go off in the middle of the night and interrupt your sleep. So that's a suggestion, especially if they're high up. And then the other thing, since we're in public service announcements, carbon monoxide detectors. Same kind of thing, they have limited lifespan. I know people who've had carbon monoxide poisoning, lovely brand, relatively new house, but a situation where those things happen, venting and stuff like that. Fortunately, not in Lower Makefield with those lovely people. But those are the kinds of things that it's important to think about in terms of that. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Supervisor Blundy?
Yeah, I would just ask, John, that your public service announcement be retweeted, reshared, whatever we want to do. I mean, I think of all the developments that are new. Like, I think I live in a new house, even though I built it before my daughter was born. And I may or may not have replaced my smoke detectors. Wouldn't even have occurred to me, right? And they're hardwired, so even if the battery's dead, I'm still good. I think that's important information to get out there for people. So I think anything we can do to spread it beyond just now, but, you know, through our social media outlets would be really important.
I know I put it in the quarterly newsletter about the smoke detectors and stuff. And as I like to tell a lot of people, when we do go out and see them, if they are yellow, it's time for them to be replaced. And it's amazing, you forget they're on the ceiling, and you look, and they blend in with the ceiling sometimes. But if they're yellow, it's time to get them replaced, so.
So if your plastic is oxidized, it's not for a smoke detector. Excellent, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item 10, managers' report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. One item this evening, and this is a continuation of a conversation that was had at a prior meeting related to an approval of a Township Purchasing Policy Manual. Again, this was previously shared with you, but it is ready for your consideration if you're so inclined. Again, the manual largely speaks to different levels of approval authority for... speaks to different levels of approval authority for department heads, for the Chief Financial Officer position, and then also the Township Manager position in circumstances where items are budgeted that may be considered under general allotments or as part of, again, budgeted funds. Speaks to looking at opportunities to purchase or procure goods and services through cooperative purchasing programs. Speaks to opportunities that should be sought related to intergovernmental joint purchasing. Outlines just a general preference for making sure that we're including disadvantaged business enterprises, minority business enterprises, and women business enterprises in our procurement processes and trying to seek goods and services from those types of designated businesses when, when available. Speaks to environmentally friendly purchasing, again, if there's an opportunity to, to be cognizant of procuring products that are deemed or certified to be more environmentally friendly than others. Talks about public access to procurement information, expresses, again, something that the township has historically done, but a preference for issuing a request for proposals for professional services periodically, again, noting that generally those would be done on an every three to five-year basis. And then there's a section that gets into just ethics in, in public contracting and procurement. Again, things that the township has historically followed, but just codifies some of those, some of those requirements. So happy to address any questions that the board may have or the public may have relative to that. But again, as, as the board has done on a couple of occasions in the most recent meetings, just looking at codifying some of these policies to make sure that there's, again, we're expressing what should be done and what we desire to do as it relates to these, these issues. And then also provides direction to staff as, as we're implementing budgets and those kinds of things. So again, happy to address any questions if there are any.
Is there a motion to approve the purchasing?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Are there any questions from any supervisors, members of the public? No one's on, we have no callers. So that's a good sign. With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the township's proposed purchasing policy manual signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed or abstained? Let the record reflect that it's four zero. Is there other general updates to item 10B?
I do not have any general updates at this point, but if the board or members of the public have any questions, I'm happy to address any, any issues that you may raise.
Moving on to Agenda Item 11, Parks Recreation, General Project Updates.
I'm going to ask, Monica's not here this evening, but Derek, if you wouldn't mind just coming up and just maybe providing a, a brief update, I'm sorry, a brief update on the, the work that's being done at Memorial Park with the basketball court. That's probably helpful.
Yeah, no worries. I know Isaac briefly touched on it. Yeah. So the basketball courts at Memorial Park, the subcontractor for Keystone Sports, our contract, the vendor, they were on site yesterday, Tuesday, milled out all the old asphalt, started rough grading that material. Obviously, today they were scheduled to pave today and tomorrow. Obviously, weather's delayed that. Not a big deal. They're planning on returning Monday, I believe it is as of now. So they have two days of paving, hopefully Monday, Tuesday. And then the courts will go through their thirty-day cure, we'll call it a cure cycle before they put the coating on. So the goal is about thirty days from Monday. Hopefully, we have brand-new basketball courts available for the residents to use.
Wow. And Derek, we have the big Villanova V.
We'll put a big, big LMT right in the circle.
Just joking.
I think one of the colors is blue, but I don't, I don't know that it's stadium blue.
Stadium blue.
Yeah, I think it's blue and red. Yep.
It'll be a flapping hawk.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's, it's, it's blue and red. So it's, it's U Penn colors. It's a recognition of the victory against Villanova.
Oh, man. Brutal. Any other project updates?
I don't believe there's anything at this point on talking record.
I don't know if you didn't want to, Patterson Farm had to start the Phase One, the Phase One assessment. So Gilmore and Associates through the RDA, they did start yesterday and today, they were on site starting the Phase One assessment. So talking with those guys, they hopefully will have that report in our hands. I believe they said in about a month, about five weeks, they said to finalize that report. We should have that Phase One assessment.
That's actually excellent news and good to hear. With that, we move on to actually Public Works 12A.
Sure. So in front of you for this evening, for consideration is authorization to accept Change Order Three. That would be from Land Studies in the amount of $29,800. And that is to conduct a feasibility study relating to potential floodplain restoration efforts and modifications of the existing stormwater management basins in the Mayfield Chase and Longshore State Developments.
So moved.
Any public comment? Okay. With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Does that include you, Supervisor Blundy?
Yes.
Okay. Just checking. So the motion passes four zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 12B.
Sure. 12B is the authorization to purchase traffic signal equipment for Big Oak and Pine Grove Roads Traffic Signal Improvement Project. So I don't, the, the board may not recall, in 2022, the township received a Greenlight Go grant for signal improvements to this intersection. Part of that grant is to have it complete by May of 2025. So by the township purchasing the equipment ahead of the contractor and finalization of the plans, these are long lead items. They'll take about twenty-eight weeks to get. So by us purchasing in advance, it starts the clock on the material procurement. In the meantime, we'll get the contractor selected hopefully this fall so they hit the ground in the spring running with materials in hand. That is in the amount of...
So 126,904,80. So again, just for additional information, the Greenlight Go grant that the township perceived that Derek referenced is in the amount of $305,320. In addition, there is a match component that the township will be expected to make as it, as it relates to the overall project. That's a twenty, twenty percent match is required by the grant agreement. And this is an intersection that was identified in the current Act 209. So the, the traffic impact fee that, that we assess, the study that was done to assess those fees identifies this improvement as, as a desirable or a potential improvement. So therefore, it's, it's fundable using those restricted Act 209 funds.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Supervisor Blundy?
Thank you. Love the idea, Derek, but I just want to make sure that we don't buy the wrong stuff. So.
No, absolutely. So all the materials, so the engineer for that project is...
Bowman.
Bowman, Bowman, who was the old McMahon. So Bowman did review the material list. It actually was also reviewed by Safe, our traffic engineers. Everyone's on board that it is the proper equipment for what that signal, what that intersection needs. I, I had the same questions myself. So it was, it was double-checked by two engineering firms. So hopefully.
Thank you.
They got it.
Okay. Not seeing any other comments or questions. No, no callers online. I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Let the record reflect that the item passes four zero. Moving on to, and Derek, you're free. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
And it's, there's exciting news on Patterson Farm, too. So that's good to know.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for mentioning that.
Yeah. Moving on to Solicitor's Report, Section 13A.
Thank you, Chairman Lewis. The miniature reflect that all supervisors present this evening but for Supervisor McCartney did meet prior to this meeting in an executive session to discuss employment matters, litigation matter, and real estate. Moving on to 13A. Before you, it's a consideration of approval of the ordinance amending the regulations governing short-term lodging facilities. At our last meeting, I believe on July 17th, it was before you, we discussed it. It was approved for advertising. Advertising is now complete and proper notices have been sent to all the necessary parties, including the Bucks County Law Library. So it is before you this evening to consider approval.
So moved.
Any supervisor questions, comments? Any public comments? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? The ayes have it four zero.
Great. Thank you. Second thing on my agenda is consider the acceptance of the proposed settlement in the Havison and Vrieswick Tax Assessment Appeal. I believe that's in your packet. There was a tax assessment appeal taken by the parties just mentioned, Mr. Havison and Ms. Vrieswick regarding property at 100 Floral Vale Boulevard. We let the school district, and let me preface this by saying this was taken care of by my predecessor. But as, as we would have done and as suggested, really let the school district take the lead since the township has a small portion of, or a small interest in the outcome. So litigation was ensued. The petitioners were originally denied their assessment before the Board of Assessments. They appealed it. And then we, the school district, and I believe the county filed their appearances. There was a settlement reached and the settlement is tiered in the sense that it was for 2023. And it was a 2023 tax assessment. It was taken in 2022, which would be effective for 2023 taxes, excuse me. So it was a tiered settlement. 2023 was one assessment and then a reduced assessment for 2024 forward. So the, I can go into details if anybody has any questions, but that's...
Just one quick question would be the revenue impact for the township.
I did not do the absolute calculations on that. I can tell you that, because I didn't have the current, and pardon me because I didn't have the current millage, but it was, the assessment went from 171,960, denied, appealed. The settlement was 154 for 2023. For 2024 forward, 146,000. So roughly, the fair market value decreased, or imputed fair market value decreased in the neighborhood of $50,000.
Okay. Any other supervisor, is there a motion, by the way?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
I just had a question.
Sure.
So the current tax annual looks like it was about 42071. Does that sound, or you don't...
Forty...
Forty-two thousand?
That could be right.
Oh seventy-one is what we had.
That seems...
I mean, not, that wouldn't be for us, I don't think. Are you seeing?
No, I mean, yeah, the total tax base on a taxable assessment of 171,960, which I think is what you referenced.
That is.
Was 42071. So you're saying it's now 154 for 2023. We're going back. And then 146 for 2024. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I can figure it out for you.
Yeah. And that's the assessed value.
Yeah. Any other supervisor comments, questions? Is there a public comment or question about this litigation at all? Okay. Hearing none. Ready for vote?
Ouchie.
Well, not all of our decisions are ones we would like. I would like the number to be higher.
Sure.
But...
But the cost of litigation, just to get that, a small incremental increase or to even let it remain the same, probably the net net, it's not worth it.
We've had other appraisals the other way, too. So this is a recurring situation.
It's about 10%.
Yeah. Well, it's not that much money for us, then, because we're only...
Thirty-two hundred.
Yeah, we're, yeah, it's not that much. Okay.
Couple shekels.
Yeah. With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor of, of accepting the proposed settlement in the Havison and Vrieswick Tax Assessment Appeals signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? The motion passes four zero. Are there any other general updates?
Just have a few quick general updates. We have been working on the historic demolition ordinance. We're almost, that is almost completed, which should probably be before you, with any luck, the next meeting, their next Board of Supervisors meeting. Open space referendum, which we talked about in detail at our last meeting, we're working on the final, we're really fine-tuning the final notice to the Board of Electors. And once that is in place, that should be going to them probably within the next week. Then advertising will take place. There should be some discussion amongst the supervisors as to the informational component of that and how you are going to relay that information to the residents. So I can certainly assist on that aspect of it.
Dave, would it be fair, I mean, I know one of the things we talked about was staff putting together some objective talking points on, you know, this whole thing. So is that in process or can we get that in process?
Yeah, we can absolutely do that.
And we're, we're available to assist. But that finishes my...
Any other ordinance updates you want to cover?
Sign ordinance is, is in draft form and it is before, it was, I believe included in your packets, if I'm not mistaken. And my understanding is it will be before the Planning Commission on Monday at their meeting. So they'll have a first look at it at this point. I will caution that, or in our defense, it's, it's not in final, final form by any stretch of the imagination. It was a monumental task. And if you look at it, you can see the number of changes. And I suspect that there will be many more changes that will result from discussions that will ensue between the Planning Commission and this board.
Excellent.
But it's a start.
Great. And when you say that, it's because, you know, there's the main ordinance, but then it touches others. And you're just trying to get the language agreed to in theory in the main one and then all the other places it touches. Is that...
Well, the main ordinance itself was monumental in trying to do that. I believe that once we have that in place, yes, everything else on it touches, and it does touch quite a bit, will follow suit. We'll be able to sort of mesh those or marry those together, I would like to say fairly easily, hopefully. But it is really the ordinance itself that is before you. I hate to use, I always say it looks like a bloodbath sometimes when you open these ordinances with the changes. But there, there were many, many changes that were made. And again, I suspect that there will be many, many more that they'll either be fine-tuned or will hopefully subtract rather than add. I think we included quite a, quite a number of changes. Thank you. Thank you.
Moving on to supervisor reports. I think we just covered the Planning Commission will be meeting on Monday in this room. So if, if you're interested in the signed ordinance, it'd be ideal for you to come. There's a packed agenda for that, so it may not get as much coverage in that first meeting, but will be covered later. That's really all I have for, hey, Supervisor Grunier is in Boston and we've gotten some of his, some of the good news on the ad hoc property community. Supervisor Ross?
No report.
Okay. Supervisor Blundy?
No report.
Supervisor McCartney?
Nothing reported this time.
Moving on to Agenda Item 15, Other Business. Is there any other business for the board at this time? I'm not seeing anything.
Just for informational purpose on that revenue loss thing, I just did the calculations real quick. So for the township in 2023, it's $413.98 is the, is the loss. And then when it decreases down to the 146 assessment, it's a $598.38 loss. So again, when the solicitor mentions the cost of litigation associated with, obviously, you don't want to see assessments move in that direction, but that, that's the extent of loss that the township realized by virtue of the acceptance of that settlement.
That's the district.
Yeah, the district, they, they get the bigger money. And the county gets the bigger, they get more than us, too.
Usually, yeah, it's, usually the rule of thumb is school district is about two-thirds. And then from the, yeah, from the third, then it's between the county who gets a bigger portion of it and then the township.
But I, I mean, I think that's a good example. A lot of times, people want to know where their taxes are going and why we're not doing more with their taxes, right? That's a pretty big deduction that that piece of property had. But for us, the portion that comes to Lower Mayfield is $500-ish. Lower Makefield is $500-ish, right? So if you're unhappy with your tax bill, which I don't know that you should be, but if you are, it's probably not coming here.
Yeah.
And you've already missed your appeal for, your appeal timing for 2025.
Yeah, the other thing I would say on that, if you live in a house that was built after 1999 or the 2000 period, you're perhaps slightly over-assessed. If you're before that time, you're way under-assessed. So if you live in a newer home, it would behoove you to consider looking at the Board of Assessment for Appeals process. Personally, I've done that twice, and I will tell you, the best strategy is when I did not appear and my kids were much younger, for some reason, that made a big difference. Whereas if I showed up, it didn't make a difference. But anyway, that's my hint of the day for you on that. Moving on to Item 16, Appointments to Boards and Commissions. I know that as a Board, we've gotten so many human relations commissions, we're going through all those. Would there be acceptability to appoint the member to Harb at this time?
I think that James is Harb.
Yeah, sure. I'd make a motion to appoint Jack McArthur to Harb.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
There's some kind of name joke there, James, but I have, I can't get it yet.
It's very close.
Initials, I don't know, something.
Very close.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item 17. So if you have public comment on anything that we haven't discussed this evening that you'd like to share with us, now is your time. And I'm not seeing, oh, one person, okay.
Lee Pedowitz, 247 Truman Way. I'm a resident of Lower Makefield Township. Just a continuation of the discussion we had regarding the gates at Yardley. In light of the comments made after I made my little talk, I don't know if you're aware, but we had a vote in the community whether the gates should be there or should not be there. The results of the vote were 200 opposed, 99 in favor, and 73 households did not vote. So I just wanted to make that, bring that to your attention. Also, if you took a look at that video when the fire truck was coming in, the person driving the fire truck had a swing basically into the exiting lane to make that turn to get in. During an emergency situation, I don't think anybody would take the time to do that. And I was a volunteer fireman for over 20 years, and I drove all this stuff, and I responded to a heck of a lot of calls. And I know, you know, when your adrenaline's pumping, sometimes things get put aside. But the one thing that wasn't highlighted was that the chief mentioned that the fire vehicles cannot get out the exit at Renaissance Boulevard and Oxford Valley Road. They cannot make that turn through the gate, they have to go out the entrance. Now, this is even with gates or without gates. The way it's designed, they can't do it. So if the gates and its island wasn't there, they could easily do it. Even now, if you watch the traffic, there are plenty of residents that instead of making that hard turn out the exit, they go out the entrance because the gates aren't operational yet. So that's just one thing to consider. So if there are gates, what would a fire truck do? Pull up to the entrance to exit the community? Pull up to the entrance, then how are they going to get the gates to open? So that's another thing to consider. And the one thing I just want to emphasize is that if the neighborhood was designed correctly, we would not be having this discussion today. The gates wouldn't be there, the obstructions wouldn't be there. So why am I requesting a letter from the Board explaining to me why the design of the community was approved with allowing access to fire apparatus in violation of standards and codes that I brought up before? I would also like a letter explaining how the 2000 IFC requirement is being met with the gate installations. And as I just said, it could have all been avoided if the neighborhood was designed to specified with the codes and standards, especially the IFC standards. So that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to, oh, we have one more person, sure.
To his point, real quick. Mr. Pedowitz, is there any way that you could provide, I guess, key fobs that we could give to our fire department in order they...
They have, they have knockboxes.
What's that?
No, no, they have a knockbox, they have that already.
They do?
Yeah.
So if they come up to it, the gate will open?
Sure. Could I just say something?
Please come back to the mic. Sure.
Right now, as far as I know, there are several options being considered for activating the gates. One of the options is have them activated by the sound of a siren. So my first question was, well, suppose there's an ambulance going down Oxford Valley Road to the hospital down there. I was told the gate, these sensors would be sensitive enough to open the gate, even if nobody's coming in. Key fobs, I don't know what, there's a committee, like I said, I don't know what they've decided, but can you see, okay, a fire truck pulls in, assuming the gates are there and operable, a fire truck comes in there, and whoever's driving the truck has to either get out with a key fob, or maybe there'll be a big arm that they could stick their arm out and touch, I don't know. My whole point is they shouldn't be there. So that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Kim Eschbach, 244 Hoover Way, also Regency, but I've been a resident of Lower Makefield Township for 35 years. And I just wanted to, this was a kind of a perfect segue. Once our gates are implemented, for your consideration, would you have a fire truck or emergency vehicle come back and make sure that they can get into all the exits or all the entrances to our community once the gates are implemented, and just, you know, to get them familiar with how that's going to work?
Sure, we wouldn't have a problem doing that. And then, and it just, we've come out to Regency a number of times, I don't, if you were involved with the Caddis light issue, leakage issue, and I don't know how, and then the mold issue, were you, and how...
Oh, yeah, where people had to have their stuck up, yeah.
So we've done, the Township has really been aggressive where we can.
Right.
You know, but as it relates to this particular gate structure, it's within the HOA's purview.
This is a highly emotional issue within the community, the gates versus no gates, and I think we're, you know, just trying to deal with it and make sure that our properties are going to be safe, and supposedly the gates are going to keep our properties safer, but there's no perimeter fence. So anybody can walk in, anybody can park right, my house just happens to be right at that entrance, that remote entrance, and anybody could park there at the curb, gates are here, they could park at the curb, and they could unload everything in my house, in their car, do the turnaround, and just get out. So that's another issue. But anyway, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I think we can move to adjourn. Thank you.
Aye.